Thanks Jerry. I'd like to call this meeting to order 7:01. Hannah, would you mind taking role?
All right, commissioners present and establishing a quorum commissioners Dawkins, Blair, Walker, Nugent, Lockhart, and Bull.
All right, and Commissioner Lewis was excused.
Yes.
Great, okay, thanks Hannah. So at this time, we'd like to ask if there's any one that would like to make public comments or address the commission items not related to current business. Nobody in the waiting room? Nope. Next item is approval of minutes. These are from our last meeting, which was August 8. Commissioners, any edits at all? No, okay, and ask somebody move approval. Thanks Jake.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second.
Thanks Brandy. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Posed. Motion passes. All right, item five. This is a public hearing for proposed code amendments to chapter 22.12 of the Monroe Municipal Code. And it looks like Kate will be presenting this evening. And at this time, I would like to open the public hearing.
Give my presentation real quick.
Yep.
All right, next slide, please. So first off, I just want to thank the commission definitions are not super exciting, but extremely important. And it does take a lot of time to get through these again before you this evening is final. Or you're going through the final list of the definitions for the Monroe Municipal Code. It's title, chapter 2212, title 22. And these, this process actually started before the title 22 was adopted back in 2017, 18, 19. Then they got adopted in 2019. Additional changes were needed because there was a discrepancy between your old code. And that was chapters 17, 18, and 19, which became title 22. And when the city made the change, the definitions did not necessarily reflect the new code. And so put us in this awkward situation where we have outdated definitions. Next slide. So just again, walking through again in 2019, they were originally adopted in 2021. And an emergency ordinance was passed to make fixes necessary because the same issues continued to arise. But during that time, you had staffing changes, you lost staff in the community development department. And the emergency ordinance lapsed before final adoption. So back in May of 2022, the council again adopted the same definitions under an emergency ordinance. And so we brought them to the planning commission for full review consideration and then to move forward. Next slide. All right, since your last meeting, or again, sorry, just a reminder, there's a variety of items in here. The first one is there were required definitions by the state that were not included. Those included affordable housing, emergency housing, emergency shelter, enhanced service facilities, family or vision to family, household low income, household extremely low income, household very low income, household moderate income, major transit stop owner and short term rentals. Those were all included in the definitions that you reviewed. Another significant change was we grouped all of the sign definitions together under S. We also removed all the wireless communication definitions because they are in their own chapter, which was adopted earlier this year. That's Monroe Municipal Code, chapter 2262. We also removed all of the CIPA definitions. And this is new since we saw you last, we had one final review, had a couple of conversations with our city attorney. The city actually already adopts these by reference in Monroe Municipal Code, chapter 2278. And so instead of having conflict, we're going to stick with what the state tells us to keep as definitions. And then finally, the planning commission had a couple, a handful of conversations about 22 additional definitions, which are in your packet this evening. Next slide. Continuing on with the changes, you saw this last time, but we also removed all the definitions associated with the Commute Trip Production Act. They again are in their own chapter within chapter 2288, Commute Trip Production Act. We also grouped daycare and childcare under the D definition now, which begins with daycare. And then it splits out by type. All the critical area definitions are now under C with critical areas. We removed all the duplicates and again, some more regroupings. Next slide. After your last conversation on this on August 8th, there were some additional changes. Spelling grammar, I think actually one of our commissioners pointed out one of them. Clarification on some of the national codes, which we do need to maintain. And it was also one of the things that was proposed in 2019 to better specify uses. We also are modifying, taking out he, she, when it's in, for example, the community development director or their representative. So we did some modifications for that as well. Again, the state law and next slide. All right, so to date, we did a notice of application that this was being presented to the planning commission and considered by the city. We have not received any public comments to date. We did environmental determination of non-significance on August 17th. No comments or appeals were received. This was also sent to the Washington State Department of Commerce, which is required for all code amendments. They accepted it for the expedited review and we received no comments. So that is a very brief overview of where we've been and why we're here tonight. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. And then I think actually, could you go one more slide there we go? If you're ready, after you've held your public hearing, the recommendation is on the screen.
Commissioners, questions for Kate this evening? The comments that you embedded into the definitions made it very handy to figure out if the definition, you know, strike through or where it went. It made it very easy to follow. So that was very helpful.
Good, thank you. So then if you want to open.
Yes.
Do we have the cheat sheet?
I have a cheat.
Oh, you got it.
So Jake, would you like to make a motion to open the public testimony portion?
Like to make a motion to open the public testimony portion of the hearing.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Posed. Motion passes. So typically we'd ask for public testimony at this. But there is no one in our waiting room, no one present here this evening. So I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Anyone?
I motion to close the public testimony.
Excellent.
I second.
Thank you. Commissioners in favor of closing the public testimony portion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passes. At this point, we allow for debate from the commissioners. I think this is the 11th time apparently you've seen this. So there will be no debate forthcoming. So we'd like to close the public hearing. So I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing.
I motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
My second.
Thank you. Commissioners in favor, please say aye.
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 Posed. Motion passes. So with that, if someone would like to read the recommended action.
I am happy to do that. I moved to direct staff to draft findings of fact and conclusions of law for the planning commission that recommend that the Monroe City Council approve the proposed amendments to chapter 22.12 MMC definitions.
Thank you.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Good, that was awesome. Thanks Kate. All right, so we have next item of business is new business. And we have capital facilities plan with Mr. Peterson.
We're having fun with these mic buttons here. A little extra clicking, just like you, Commissioner. All right Hannah, if you can load that up, I see. I'll do my intros. I'm Scott Peterson. I'm the city engineer at here, been here, been city engineer since May. I don't recall meeting any of you, so. Anyways, it's a pleasure being here tonight. I was asked to come and give a presentation on our proposed capital facilities plan. Go ahead and advance to the next slide Hannah. The, oh, I have it on my screen, it's not moving, but I think I'll let it up there. So when, when we develop our capital facilities plan and capital facility, it could be anything that's a city project driven. It could be a new road or new sidewalk, some sewer line or water main. It can even be a building of ours or parks, you know, it's just a capital project. That's kind of the definition. When we work on this, you know, we, we start by, you know, we, we think about the strategic priorities that the city has adopted, you know? You know, do we build things that are safe and secure or to promote economic vitality in the city? We have a very wide variety of projects that we do. It's not just about utilities, as we'll get into a little bit later. But these are the core values that we look at as a city, as we develop essentially for anything we do really. So if you could. So what drives this? Actually, the growth management act requires cities of our size, you know, to essentially have on the radar what we need to build, you know, over the, at least six years, we have a look, look forward to see what we need to do. And we also need to show that we have a financial plan to back it. So it's not just a wish list, we can actually do it. So that's what staff here at city work hard with, along with our electives to come up of the plan, to meet our goals and our priorities and develop the list. We actually start working on this in May and we really, really pull the chocks out of the way and hit the ground running in July. So there's a lot of number crunching, being counting, going to the finance department and seeing if they could plug it into their finance model and see if it actually comes out in a positive or a negative number. You go back and try and, you know, it's just a lot of work with the staff and everyone works hard at it. And, you know, the projects throughout the city, and again, it's not just public works, it could be parks. And it can reach out, it could be economic development as well. The capital plan actually reflects the capital facilities element that's in our adopted comprehensive plan. And the, the element there identifies the needs of improvements in our city to support the projected growth over, you know, the ensuing years that are coming. So you look at people forecasting where our density is going to be, what kind of infrastructure we need to do to keep our streets moving at an acceptable level? Making sure our sewer and water utilities are big enough to provide that infrastructure for the projected growth. So we plug that all in together. And then that's the plan or that's the facilities element in the comp plan. And then the, the actual capital facilities plan identifies a six-year radar, at least with a financial backing to show that it can work. So that's what we do and we do that every year. So if this is your first time seeing this, you'll see it about a year from now again. And so the tour, if I will, if I can use it that way. If you go to the next slide Hannah, we really, as we say, we start by working with the mayor and all the different departments kind of in May. This year is a new one, we just enacted a two-year budget. It's kind of the first time we've done that, so it's a little bit exciting. So we will still bring this plan forward every year though. But it will just reflect what's in our two-year budget. So instead of just one year, year to year. So we hit the road, so to speak, no pun intended really. But we, we start by going to our committees. This, this plan was presented to the P3 committee back in late July. Next stop is with you tonight. And so we're doing the, the presentation here tonight. We'll be back here again in two weeks for the public hearing on the matter. And so that will be coming up just yeah, two Mondays from now. And then after that, we'll, it'll start dovetailing in with, it'll kind of coincide with the mayor's budget approval process. That's going to be occurring really in force in October. And then both the budget and this capital facilities plan is being looked to be adopted about mid-November. And Bill, we're done, we're ready for the next year. So that is pretty much it. On that, the next slide, please. So just to give some highlights of some projects that we do. You know, we have, in the summary, we have 37 various projects identified in our CFP, our capital facilities plan. They can be, they can range from a planning study or a design phase. Maybe we're beyond that now, we're actually ready to, you know, break ground and build it. So a lot of these projects take more than one year to do because they're pretty involved. So typically, it's at least a year planning, might have to buy some property that could take more than a year. And then luckily, you know, construction usually is just a seasonal kind of three-month ordeal. But some construction projects, as I'll get into later, will take a couple of years. The pictures that we have on the screen there, the upper right is just part of our annual road maintenance program, I believe. Down below, we just built our second water reservoir up on the Department of Corrections property. So that's a good deal. We kind of doubled the capacity in that water supply zone. So the DOC is probably thankful for that one. All in all, 37 projects, we're looking about $32.7 million in planned expenditures from a variety of funding sources. What feeds this, you know, we get a lot of money from REIT, Becky Asser, our finance directors, the wizard at making it all work, you know, coming out in the black. So, but we have REIT, we have impact fees from development. We also staff work hard to seek out grants, federal state grants. They're definitely a money provider, particularly when it comes to street improvements. So we rely heavily on, on grants to help make those projects become a reality. We also have our, as you know, our, our adopted transportation benefit district. It provides, it seems fluctuates depending on the economy, but it's a 0.2% sales tax in the city. It seems to generate about $800,000 to $900,000 a year in working towards rejuvenating our roadways and improving our sidewalks. We also have a big project, as I mentioned, it's not always roads and utilities, it's also facilities. And we've been saving up for some time now to remodel city hall. We plan on breaking ground next year. So it's currently in design process with MIG architects. There's a concept rendering of the building down on the bottom left. And that's just an aerial overview of today's campus. So there'll probably be some growing pains, as you can imagine, trying to conduct city business while having the building rebuilt above you. It should be fun over the next year or two. But we're looking forward to getting that project underway. It's been a long time in the making. Another example, that's not related to utilities, but related to tourism is our, our approach to promoting Monroe's own branding with wayfinding and gateways. And so I'm sure you've all seen, we've installed a couple gateway monuments this past May. And we have yet to install general wayfinding and updated park markers. This will help people see our own brand of signs as it guides people to our key points of interest. All in all, we have three phases, phase one being the gateway monuments. That's done, we're in the middle of phase two, phase three is supposed to be next year. When we're all said and done, we'll have 86 new various signs and shapes in those two gateway monuments. And should give Monroe a nice fresh look of, you know, who we are and kind of identify ourselves as a unique community, our own brand. Next slide, please. This one might not be so exciting, but sewer utility is fun. This one here is an important sewer mainline that we are connecting the Department of Corrections and upgrading that line and bringing it down to our existing pump station at the Park Place Middle School. That's going to help with sewer reliability and help give us more control in, you know, the various flow rates and whatnot. Because right now, the DOC has their own facility and their own lagoon. And sometimes it sends a lot and sometimes it doesn't. So it just helps us to have a more regulated flow. So it's in, from the sewer public works perspective, it's an important project. On the screen, it looks like a green line, but we're happy to see it go in. This is just a shout out to our transportation benefit district. Every year, we, you know, we've had some savings in the bank. We try and knock out at least a million, maybe upwards of $2 million in street preservation. So on the bottom left, one of our roads was getting completely repaved all the way down to the gravel dirt base there. But also every time we're in that neighborhood, we look over at the sidewalks. If we, if we see a need to improve the sidewalk, meet current federal sidewalk ramp regulations, we'll get in there and knock them out and rebuild them. So that's what you see over on the left-hand side, some up-to-date sidewalk ramps. So it helps with our ADA transition plan, making our community safer and more walkable for all. Next slide. I can't speak much to parks, not my department, but I do know that they are constantly making park plans and coming up designs, buying some property. And also, you know, I, you can see them go through and freshen up the playground, you know, get some new stuff in there. I got a party foul going on here. My apologies. So, but yeah, that's Mike Farrell's department as a public, I'm sorry, as a parks director there. So they're definitely, and we do dovetail our work together. For example, we're doing the Blueberry Park, we're upgrading the stormwater system there. And once we're done, parks will come in and rebuild a new playground structure on top of it. So that's an example where plug works and parks work together to reach a common goal. So next slide, please. Now the circle of life, yes, so strategic priorities, as we talked about, that feeds into what we do in support of the mayor's biennial budget. We go through various committees and of course, we're here tonight, the planning commission. The capital facility plan will definitely garner the all-important public input. And so that's going to be occurring in a couple of weeks. It might even have another shot in October as part of the, the overall budget process. At some point mid-November, we'll make it through the council adoption process. And, you know, I'll tell you, when we get into the new biennium, we start doing the work, you know, that's on the list. You know, it's just our pounding out with this designer, go to construct and deliver those projects. And we'll be here a year from now and talking about it again. See what we're up to next. But that is generally the presentation in the packet. They have a list in their projects of this year and their current status, in case you're curious. As well as the, on the attach to the back is the capital facilities plan. Where all these numbers that were on the presentation tonight, that's where the numbers came from. The objective tonight was just to present it to the commission. And then if you guys have any discussion behind it, there's no formal action tonight. Again, that's in a couple of weeks. So that concludes my presentation.
Thanks Scott. Commissioners, questions for Scott at all? Go ahead Brandy.
So it says informational, but also what part of it is drafted and what is approved? Because you mentioned that the city hall project is going to break ground next year. So that part's already approved?
Yeah, so you know, the, there could be changes to the, the facilities plan. Because again, it's not going to be wrapped up until, you know, November. But right now, it's a draft. And so there are some projects that are definitely going. And then, you know, this list was originally developed kind of like July, but between July and September, there are changes. You know, we're, we're looking at finances and maybe we're a little rich. Maybe another exciting project comes along that we feel needs to be done sooner like this biennium instead of the next biennium. We also have staffing turnover and sometimes that just frankly affects our capacity to do the projects. So, and I thank you Commissioner Blair for bringing that up. Because I did want to note that we will be adding like a police department assessment and improvements in there. I think it's more about the 25, 26 biennium. But we found money and we think it's a value that we will bring it forward to actually this upcoming biennium to spend money during this next two years on it, instead of waiting for years three and four from now. So there, there will be some kind of like movement as we have our current information. And we say, you know, we can't do that project right now due to competing priorities or staffing capacity. So we'll, some project, projects might slide backward into, you know, further years. So that's why it's draft. But the building, you know, as you mentioned, the building, it's a go unless it's taking longer and longer to, you know, solidify the, the plans. But I've seen now several iterations of the layout. So I can see that the layout's gelling, if you will, it's starting to settle. So I, as far as I know, we're still on track to probably break ground, you know, springtime next year.
I have a follow-up question on that. So that is like the second largest, largest expense in the budget after the biosolids treatment plant. So of the strategic anchors or priorities, what is the benefit to everyone of the upgrades to city hall?
Well, that's a good question. And a lot of, a lot of people could probably answer better than me or not here. But I know that I've heard that through the years, there's been attempts to remodel city hall because it's a very outdated building. And for whatever reason, it just hasn't been able to work. But this last, over these last couple of years, we've been able to set aside some money, you know? And in terms of, you know, the building's just been around for a long time. So, and it's been a long time trying to work on this. However, you know, but is it good with city hall? It's just, you know, it's, it's good government. We put it off for a long time, you know, we, we just need to get moving on it. Other options we've looked at was just moving out of city hall to other locations. You know, fragmenting off and putting public works over in some other building in the city. And, and so through the various assessments and stuff, it was determined that doing something here to this building, not doing a complete tear down and brand new, but just work with what we got and do some heavy remodeling. It was our best, most economical choice to get what we want, what we feel will help support the city and provide, you know, government services for the community into the future.
So to be more efficient for the workers. And then is there any like, will be a community gathering space, like any or better access for a public?
So we are also, as part of this layout, we do have like separate areas for the court. You know, instead of sharing the space with the council. So there'll be more emphasis on the court system as well as in a separate facility for the councils and committees. So from now, there is that, that definitely a public benefit from that.
If I can add as well, this room itself is also being re-envisioned for better functionality for the planning commission, the council and to host gatherings. One of the concepts is that it will be in an indoor/outdoor. So you can also take advantage of the new flag plaza and it's much more inviting to the public. That's another.
Also overcrowding just in office spaces. As the city grows, personnel grows, so we have to accommodate some personnel roles, right?
Yeah, that is true. Several of us are sharing offices, you know, we're, I've seen three people in an office. So.
That's my last question for now.
Thanks Melanie.
Yeah, um, I don't know how far along in the planning process it is right now. But the, in putting the sewage line in for the Department of Corrections and it going down to Park Place, what kind of like traffic impact would be expected there in, on Main Street? And then in front of Park Place for that? I'm just thinking with all the school kids and stuff, if that's going to be a summer project or overall, what kind of impact and how long that would be?
Yeah, that all goes into the, the whole idea of timing the project. So it's in design right now. So um it's in design right now, it's being designed. I believe the goal is to start sometime, I'm not the project manager of it, but I believe, you know, it'll begin sometime next year. Part of that programming would be, how many days will it feasibly take to build the sewer line? And can we start it, you know, late June, so we can avoid all the uh, you know, school bus activity and, and the kids walking to and fro. We don't expect it to be too impactful, because a decent chunk of it's not even, you know, it's up on the DOC property or along the shoulder, not in the road way. But um certainly, we definitely look at uh events like is school in session, is school out of session? Is the Monroe Fair going, is it not? You know, critical events in Monroe, we, we look and try and plan around our impactful projects, so we, we don't unnecessarily burden the community.
Just real questions.
I have another question. This might be a parks question, but there's some um acquisition um like public plaza area, uh northeast park acquisition, North Kelsey Park and Northwest Annexation Area Park Acquisition. I was wondering if you have tentative locations on where, where that is.
I, I personally don't, I know that, you know, we, we bought the North Hill Park up there off of one ninety first, you know, recently. So um I do not know what the other locations are. If you like, I can reach out to uh Director Farrell, see if he can get back to us.
I'd like to know, or if I email him, uh whatever way is the right way, how, I'd like to know that, yeah.
Okay, so to summarize, you're curious to know what other actual locations might be identified?
Yeah, they had, it was in particular for areas, public uh plaza acquisition, northeast park acquisition, North Kelsey Park, and then Northwest Annexation Area Park Acquisition.
Okay, I'll let him know.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay, and I'm gonna let Mike, you know, come present to us, because it looks like there's a little over twenty million in dollars that he needs for bond measures to do some of his development. Based on the color coding. Hmm, and he's talked to us, you know, he, before, I think the last bond measure didn't pass. So, you know, planning probably would like to, you know, at some point have him come in, figure out how he's gonna present it to voters, how it's going to get passed, and then how they're gonna, you know, put the dollars to work. I mean, the dollars are evidently, you know, fairly well defined here. But we wanna, you know, as planning commission, do what we can to help him, you know, get the bond measure passed, right? So.
We'll make sure we have a parks department representative at the public hearing.
Sure, sounds good. Just get a question.
Yeah, Scott, I'm sorry, this would be a really quick question, uh just because I've been asked it before. Is there, were you saying that uh streets are kind of repaired or refurbished as they present problems or as it's noticed? Or is there like a schedule for street repairs? Just because I've had people go, oh, this road is a problem, right?
Uh, we actually, the Public Works has a uh street tracking software we utilize. And so it, it looks at what money we have available, what's the condition of the various roads. It gives a strong suggestion of which road should be fixed based on all things, all things considered. And then our staff goes through and ground truce it. Maybe if the program's saying go all over town, maybe try and consolidate some of that, so we're not making the contractor drive everywhere. Um, you know, mobilization costs money. So there's just a little bit of fine tweaking that staff does, but we do have a, a software program called Street Scan that, that kind of keeps track of the program. And, and it's real time, we update it every year. Uh, so, yeah.
Thank you. Good. Okay, thanks Scott.
No, thank you.
So we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Two weeks.
To the day. Fantastic.
Have a good night and go Seahawks.
All right, moving on to item, new business item seven point two, introduction to comprehensive planning, Kate will be presenting.
Yes, so um Lance and I have both mentioned several times that we are starting this very big project called the twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan update. And we have a lot of new members. And so this is an opportunity just to give a high level of what is comprehensive planning? Why do we do it? And um just start familiarizing you with the different pieces. Next slide. So the city of Monroe has actually been doing comprehensive planning before required by state law. Our first official plan was actually adopted in nineteen sixty-eight, but it was a map and that was it. And that established the various zones in the city and then also the development regulations. Then in nineteen eighty, the city worked um in coordination with Snohomish County to develop the first plan that includes really kind of what you see today or what you think about as a comprehensive plan. It has land use, it has goals and policies. And um the reason we do planning is it, it makes good sense. Land is a finite resource. Uh, residents do not want to pay more taxes than necessary, but we, as uh Scott was just talking about, we need to know how much money it's going to cost to keep the city running. We need to know what new projects are coming. Once you build something, you must maintain it. So the graphic on the left is showing you the plans that we've had since nineteen eighty. The graphic on the right shows some of the sub-area plans, uh some of the other elements the city has adopted. There's a transportation map in there. We have a shoreline master program, which is also required by the state. And so the other thing is comprehensive plans are trying to accomplish multiple tasks and there are competing interests. You want to protect the environment, you don't want, and you want to protect visual um the, the cascades, but you need to hit population targets, you need to add affordable housing, you need jobs. And so this is the process that we try to figure out what is the best fit to meet the, all the goals for the residents of Monroe. Next slide. So uh last year, the, so the growth management act has been around since the nineteen nineties. And it's gone in interesting cycles. Um, several years ago, it was an eight-year cycle. You had to not only look at your comprehensive plan, but you had to look at all of your development regulations. Are they consistent with your comprehensive plan? The states change regulations on accessory dwelling units, temporary encampments. And so is your code consistent with that? That cycle went from ten years to eight years, eight years, and now we're back to a ten-year cycle. It got amended last year, so the deadline for this comprehensive plan update is December thirty first, twenty twenty-four. Hence the twenty twenty-four comp plan update uh title. And the reason the comprehensive planning or the growth management act was adopted is there was concern of sprawl or um development that is occurring in ways that is um eating into resource lands, agricultural lands, uh forestry. And so the other idea was that if you put growth and development where you have utilities and infrastructure, you're being much more financially thoughtful about how you're going to expand your city and accommodate people and um meeting all the goals for housing, employment, sewer treatment plants, et cetera. Next slide please. So this is a very complicated graphic, but what we're trying to explain is that at the top is the growth management act and it tells us what elements we have to update. But under that, you have to have consistency with the multi-county plan, which is for us, the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision twenty fifty. Then after that, Snohomish County adopted countywide planning policies. You also have to be consistent with that. And then you have our own comprehensive plan. And then you have the development regulations, which is the Monroe Municipal Code, primarily Title twenty-two for us. It was a removing to the right, the other pieces are Vision twenty fifty says we have a particular way we want to grow in this four county region. Snohomish, King, Pierce and uh Kitsap County are within our multi-region planning area. Going into that, they say in this, we're going to give you different geographies, which I'll get into in a, in a moment. But each geography needs to accommodate X number of people and X number of jobs in this region. And so that then goes back to the countywide planning policies and our own policies. And then finally, um, the two other pieces that come into play are the census. What is our population today? As well as the um Office of Financial Management for Washington State, they do the estimates every year between the uh decennial census uh updates by the federal government. And then the final component is the Buildable Lands Report. So this um, the state said, okay, you've got this plan, but can you actually make it work? Do you have enough land to build all these houses to create industry, accommodate business? And so the Buildable Lands Report also has to get updated on a, I can't remember what the timeframe is anymore, but we just finished that in twenty twenty-one. The one thing I will note about that particular update is that it was before the city adopted Title twenty-two. And so some of the assumptions for our land uh is going to be a little bit different. So this is the basis for our analysis, but we know we're going to have to take another look. Um, specifically, the city does not allow um planned residential developments anymore. And that was a way to exceed the dwelling units per acre. And so we need to take that into consideration when we're looking at this comp plan update. Next slide. Let me stop, any questions on that?
I'm sorry, can you expand on that last thing you said about plans?
And neighborhoods?
Sure, sure. So uh before two thousand nineteen, the city had a standard subdivision code. So there's, there's like three, three ways you can divide land. You do a short plat, which is nine or fewer lots, then you do a full subdivision, which is nine to as many as you want. And they had various um set requirements for their construction. We used to have what's called a planned residential development. So you would say, the city says, we want a park or we want um uh, what's another one? Oh, that you have critical areas on your property, but we want you to be able to development, uh develop to the maximum potential, so you can shrink your lots. And so it was a provided flexibility. And the city decided um that that was not necessary and instead included some of the flexibility into standard regulation in twen- in twenty nineteen. But it does have an impact on what's available.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure. Okay, so um getting back to the nuts and bolts of growth management. They have uh required elements mandatory and they have uh optional. Uh, the regulatory requirements are the land use element that goes, where's your commercial? Where's your industrial? Uh, for us, we also have an airport we have to think about. We have shorelines that also needs to be considered. Housing, it's a needs assessment, what is our, uh, what is our inventory? How big do our, how big is our population target? How many people per household do you have? And uh, so that is part of this process. On this one, I'm going to get into in a second, because it's one of the big changes that happened and state legislature latched last year. The next uh required element is capital facilities, and this is what Scott was talking about a little bit. This is your water, your sewer, stormwater, your municipal building, fire department, that all falls under capital facilities. The utilities element is actually more, um, it's outside of our scope, but we need to be coordinating. So this is Puget Sound Energy, the P U D, Verizon, Comcast, all of those providers are utilities. So we need to work with them, saying city of Monroe expects to grow this much, and this is how we're going to grow. You need to be thinking about your network or your um transformer lines as you're um doing your own capital planning. Uh, the transportation element, that's a big one for all of us every year. And for the city of Monroe, it's kind of interesting, because US two and uh SR two oh three and SR five twenty-two are under the state's control, not the city of Monroe's, but we do have to work with them. Uh, the local streets, we also have categories. Again, it's uh what do we need? Where are we growing? How much is it going to cost to do the improvements? Scott also touched on one piece, there's a mandate to make sure that our sidewalks uh have the ADA accessible ramps. That was a federal court case, so that's a component of when we redo our infrastructure, we need to be thinking of that as well. Then under the optional elements, we have economic development, which the city of Monroe actually has. That was important to the city. Um, it's, it, actually, we had one before the last iteration in twenty fifteen. Parks and Recreation, the city just adopted a brand new Parks Recreation Open Space Plan uh earlier this year. Conservation, which we haven't tackled yet, solar energy, climate change uh was a, a change in twenty twenty-one. This one's an interesting one as well. Uh, so that when the state says we want you to do a new element, they typically, well, there, they call it an unfunded mandate. So they say, city, you need to do this now, but you don't have any money to do it. And so the trade off that there or the strategy that they have used, as they call it optional. If the state or the, uh, if the state says we finally have this pot of money, cities, counties, you now have to make this a regulatory element. Um, the city of Monroe again has done uh the economic development as well as parks recreation. With the climate change as well, Puget Sound Regional Council is another regulator. So when we finish our plan, we'll send it to the Puget Sound Regional Council. They need to certify our plan, because they get the federal funding and they distribute it to King, Snohomish, Pierce and Kitsap County for projects. If they do not certify our plan, we don't get funding or we don't get some of the federal funding. What they have already told us is that city of Monroe, or actually all the cities, you're not required to do a climate change element. However, we have an expectation that you do have components. What they're really focusing on right now is resiliency. So the example, we have a fire right now um up further east on US two. How would the city of Gold Bar recover from that? If we have a major flood and it impacts our stormwater treatment, is the city already thinking about how would we recover from that type of an, an event? And so that will be an item that we need to um at least start looking into. And then finally, optional plans are sub-area plans and the city of Monroe's been doing this uh well, since last time I was here. There's the North Kelsey Plan, there's the Downtown Plan, we have an airport compatibility designation. Uh, we also have a sub-area for sexually oriented businesses, which we kind of touched on with definitions. So the city's um, in my opinion, ahead of the game on, on some of this stuff. Um, any questions on these yet? Okay, next slide. All right, so I just touched on Puget Sound Regional Council. Um, again, they are one of the regulators for us to get approval. It is uh PSRC and also the Washington State Department of Commerce. They both have to approve our plans. Vision twenty fifty was adopted in October of twenty twenty. They have a multitude of different committees. Most of those committees are um represented by elected officials by cities. The city of Monroe is considered a city and town. So if you're looking at the next C, so to, I'm sorry, I get my lefts and rights backwards. So if you're moving right from the cover, you'll see a map uh that shows the different counties and then they have different colors. And I'll, I'll provide you more information on this, but the, the plan comes up with a strategic um geographies. And so those are metropolitan cities for Snohomish County, it's the city of Everett. Then you have core cities, which is the city of Linwood. Then you have this whole new, brand new category called high-capacity transit. That's any city that has light rail or um bus rapid transit. So the ones that got added for Snohomish County include Marysville, Bothell, Mount Lake Terrace. Um, these are now in this very large geography that's expected to take most of the population and employment for our particular county. Then there are cities and towns, we're in there, the city of Lake Stevens is in there, the city of Snohomish is in there, Sultan Gold Bar. Then we have the urban unincorporated areas, so that is our urban growth area where we haven't annexed yet or incorporated. So each city has an urban growth area, if they have not completely annexed, that's what that area is. And then finally rural. Um, and then I will provide, um, I will provide you links if you, so you don't have to go digging, but all this information is online. You go to Puget Sound Regional Council, next slide please. So then as we're moving down from our regulatory, we've got the Growth Management Act, and then we have the multi-county planning policies. And now we're down to Snohomish County. That is called the Countywide Planning Policies of Snohomish County. And so that was recently updated in September of twenty twenty-one. And the And the way this works, um, the Snohomish County is the ultimate authority. They are the ones that adopt it. But in our county, we have what's called Snohomish County Tomorrow. It was created before, again, another thing, the city is very proactive. Before the Growth Management Act, the cities were trying to figure out, how do we work together? Where do we have issues? Where do we have overlap? And so Snohomish County Tomorrow, again, has three committees that are all have elected representative, elected officials are the representatives on the committees. But they also have, there's a planning advisory board, which Lance and I represent the city on. There is the Public Works Capital, got a funny name, but Scott would be representative on that. That one is actually also extremely important because when the federal funds come down, the cities are all together in the same room saying, hey, I have this list of projects. They need to be prioritized. So we're already working together with our city neighbors and with Snohomish County. And so in that policy plan, it is incorporating what's in the vision 2050. There's also a regional transportation plan that's been adopted by Puget Sound Regional Council and coordinating with all the cities and jurisdictions. So that's another document that we have to be consistent with internally inconsistent. Next slide. Okay, so more to your questions about the buildable lands. So this was adopted in 2021. The cutoff date was April first of nineteen or 2019. And so that's why I wanted to make that comment. So that's, this is the starting point. So according to the data in Snohomish County, they have a demographer, they have a, they have GIS demography. They get funding to get assistance from, for real estate. And so they put, they do the majority of the work for us. We just do, does this look correct? We go through, nope, you got the wrong zone here or our critical areas changed. And so all this information goes into figure out how much, how much land do we have? Can we accommodate this? And so based on the adopted, um, just going to run some, through some numbers for you. But in 2021, that was the last buildable lands for Snohomish County. In 2019, our estimated population was nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty people. And that, and that the end date for this particular buildable lands report was the last comprehensive cycle. So that's 2035. And at the time, they estimated that we had enough capacity to accommodate twenty three thousand, six hundred and seventy three people. So we've got capacity for people. The county also was, did numbers for housing. So it's not just people, but how many units can you actually build based on what your zoning is? And in 2019, they estimated we had five thousand, eight hundred and forty units. So that's single family, multifamily, townhouse, triplex. All of those types of units, accessory dwelling units are also included in that number. Based on the calculations, we have enough cap capacity for seven thousand, six hundred and seventy three more dwelling units by 2035. And then finally, our last target number is employment. And the 2019 estimate was ten thousand, ninety six jobs. We're here in the city of Monroe. And based on our zoning and what we had available for construction, we could add an additional, um, sorry, getting this mixed up. We can go up to eleven thousand, seven hundred and five jobs by 2035. These numbers are important and I'll be, we'll be giving you a lot more information because we have a new target. We have to go out to 2044 now. That's our next, um, next endpoint. So next slide. This is where we have to go. So again, Snohomish County said, so Puget Sound Regional Council said, you have all of these people and jobs that you need to accommodate between now. And their plan actually goes out to 2050. King, Snohomish, Pierce and Kitsap, we are all planning for 2035. Or excuse me, twenty, I'm getting tired here, 2044. But their plan goes up to 2050. And so these are specific for 2044. And so the state says, you need this, your estimated population is going to be this based on trends. And then PSRC says, okay, well, you've got to do accommodate all these people and jobs. And then Snohomish County says, well, we have this awesome model that we use. All of these inputs are coming in and each city is going to be assigned a certain target based on historic growth. What your, um, what percentage or what type of land uses you have in your community? And so for the city of Monroe, uh, if you're just following along, the twenty, uh, just following the graphic, the 2020 census for the city Monroe for population was nineteen thousand, six hundred and ninety nine. The estimated population or the target that we have been assigned, and this has been adopted. These are draft numbers have already been adopted by Snohomish County. Twenty four thousand, three hundred and two people. So if we go to the last slide, we knew that we had a capacity of twenty three thousand, six hundred and seventy three people. So if we stay on this, we need to figure out how to accommodate six hundred and twenty nine more people between 2035 and 2044. Then on the employment side, in 2020, we had an estimated ten thousand, ninety six jobs. And our target for 2044 is twelve thousand, four hundred and twenty jobs. Again, going back to the last slide, our capacity is eleven thousand, seven hundred and five based on that last buildable lands, assuming our zoning doesn't change, which means we need to figure out how to accommodate an additional seventeen, seven hundred and fifteen people between 2035 and 2044. And this is where the fun begins. It's like, this is what we have. This is what the zoning is. How do we accommodate these new populations? Next slide, please. All right, and so you've been asking and we've been promising better timelines, which we are working with, with their consultant. But big picture, these are some of the important dates. So I'm just going to run through these really quickly. It's kind of hard to see on the screen. The Puget Sound Regional Council has already adopted the vision 2050 in 2020. The Snohomish Countywide Planning Policies were adopted in 2021. Again, the Buildable Lands Report has been completed and accepted by Snohomish County. And that was done in 2021. The, the piece that's been, um, oh, sorry. The 2044 initial targets were adopted earlier this year. I believe it was in January, uh, the final, or excuse me, it was February of this year. And again, that was adopted by Snohomish County. The piece has been very interesting is the pandemic had an impact on the US census. And so we have population numbers, but a lot of the additional information that we get from the short and long forms is still not available. And that's some of the information that the state and the county use to do their modeling. And so usually this would be the first number that we have. It's going to be used to double check the numbers that we've come up with. It'd be just the timing has not worked out because they're behind, which the, um, their normal timeframe. GMA compliance. So again, this is getting back to, are we consistent with state law? Uh, and it's not just our comprehensive plan, but it's also our development regulations. Our consultant team has just started that work. I anticipate it will go through the beginning or first quarter of 2023. The comprehensive plan, believe it or not, your process started in 2020. The consultant team was hired at, or the consultant team or the RFP went out at the end of twenty, twenty, twenty one was approved earlier this year. As Lance mentioned, we've already had our first internal kickoff meeting. We're starting to get things in line to start working on our public engagement plan, which will come to you for adoption. Um, and we're also working on the website. So that will have, here's the updates. We will have a multitude of survey options. So that will be one of our ways of communicating with the residents of Monroe. We will also have to do an environmental review of this project. That typically is later in the process when we're, okay, this is our preferred alternative. Here's a couple other things that we could consider to accommodate this new population and employment targets. The legislative process is also at the tail end. This is the public hearings that you will ho- hold. It's the public hearings the city council will hold and then adoption by ordinance. And then finally, public participation. This is going to be an ongoing activity. What are the things that we are working to establish is advisory board and figuring out who our stakeholders are? That includes the school district, fire district. So we hopefully will be coming back to you shortly on that engagement plan. Next slide. So Planning Commission does the majority of the work. In addition to having our advisory board, you will be looking at the land use. You will be looking at the transportation environment. You will be asking us the questions, the hard questions. Is this consistent with Imagine Monroe? That's one really nice thing. The city just adopted a new vision statement. So we have some guiding principles as we're doing this up, this update. Some of the other big changes I just want to make you aware of is that the state significantly revised the housing element. We're going to be doing things this year that we've never been asked to do before. There is a, um, they want us to make sure, the state wants to make sure that we're housing all of our residents. And that means we need to do more analysis based on income. What, who, how much can a, somebody who's low income, moderate income? Making sure that we're having housing for all of them. We also have to do temporary housing, um, shelter housing. And the piece that is really interesting to me, and, and this is just, um, I think an evolution of where we are today, but there is a requirement that we examine racially disparate impacts. We've never been required to do that before. It's something that transit agencies have to do. So this is new territory for us. We also have to do an analysis on displacement and exclusion. Again, these are things that cities have never been asked to do before. So this is going to be, it's going to be interesting and probably a little messy. And then finally, uh, the other big piece that has changed, which I've already touched on, is the climate, uh, climate element. Again, it's optional, but the Puget Sound Regional Council has made it clear. They want us to be thinking forward about resiliency. If we have flood events, fire events, how are we going to come back from that? Next slide.
So Kate, yeah, that last slide, we have a housing action plan.
We do.
Everybody worked really hard on, but it's not specifically mentioned in your item list.
Yeah, so that document is going to help us revise the housing element. That because a lot of research that we're now required to do was already done. So I'm extremely grateful the city decided to go that route. Yeah, it's, um, it's a piece of the data analysis. It will also help drive some of our policy changes. Any other questions? Yes, go for it. No, no, don't apologize. This is important.
And, and this might be a little bit off topic. UGAs, when you have UGAs that are in kind of built out residential areas, when you're planning population growth with that UGA in mind, how, how do you accommodate for that? Or for instance, if we wanted to meet if we wanted to meet a population goal with a UGA that's all, all already built out residential, do you try to annex them to meet those? I mean, the, the city has plenty that's undeveloped land, but.
So the guiding principles that we need to follow is you need to first accommodate everybody you possibly can within the city limits. We are allowed, there are no restrictions for us not annexing our urban growth area. In fact, a decade ago, the guidance from this, uh, from the state was that you need to be annexing your urban growth areas. They should be part of your city. The catch is you can't go beyond your urban growth area. So if you have annexed or the county has allowed the development to occur in the urban growth area, you have to show just cause to increase, go beyond where your boundaries are today. And that, that's really the test. It's, it's not within your existing urban growth area. It might be you want to do more forward thinking planning instead of just saying, it's not, because right now, the city doesn't have plans for, we have an area, a small, well, actually, a piece of the Southwest UGA is coming for annexation, the Connor Annexation, which is a single parcel. There's a handful of other properties there. The majority of unincorporated City of Monroe is to the northwest and to the east. East of the Woods Creek or the Farm at Woods Creek, just northeast of that. There's a huge development that's occurring right now in unincorporated Snohomish County. They, they did have to sign no protest annexation agreements in order to get sewer because that's one of the things the city controls. If you are not in the city limits, um, we can control if we're going to extend into the urban growth area or not. The city changed the rules a couple of years ago to say, no, if you're outside the city limits, we're not going to extend sewer. Um, and our water district is much larger than that. But the urban growth area, the expectation is the city eventually annexes all that, all that area. The big question is, if you can't accommodate, because this is going to happen every 10 years. We're going to push out another 20. So you really need to be thoughtful about what can we accommodate today? What changes do we need to make?
That is super helpful because I was always under the impression that you have to get 51% of the, the area's approval in order to annex them. But if you're saying the city has that authority, because I was always thinking Robin Hood is hopeless in terms of pay your taxes.
So that's different. Annexation is different. There are, there are different ways to annex. There is the petition method, which Connor and the North Forty One, which is next to, um, the Woodlands that just came in.
Right.
Uh, there's an area that's 41 acres that is just, uh, just east of that. So that means the, the residents in that area said, we want to be a part of Monroe. We want to come in. And so there, the, it's a two pro, two pronged process. 10% of those property owners say, we want to come in. And when the city says, all right, well, let's take a look at it. And if the city thinks that's a good idea, then we say, all right, there's a few other things that we need to take care of. But now you have to go out and set and get signatures for 60% of the people that it's, and it's not people, it's people who have 60% of the assessed value in that lane, in that area. So it's not number of houses, it's based on value of land. So that's one method. The other one is election. If the city wants to go out, um, or yeah, if the city wants to go out and say, we want to annex Robin Hood. They've made it clear they're not interested. That is a vote of the people in that area. So that's another option. There are two additional ones, which, which I won't go into detail, but there, there are different methods for annexation. Just because we would like to annex those areas, it may not come to fruition. So sorry about that.
Sorry to take us down the route.
No, that's okay. Because these are all components of how cities work. Okay, um, so, and this, this one will be updated on a regular basis, but this is, this is kind of the big picture again. So we're going to have open houses. We're going to have a website that will have most of our information about the update process. We'll have survey, SEPA is another major component. Once we have the draft plan done, we will be sending, uh, information out or will send notices out citywide saying, we're ready, we've got this draft element. How's it look from an environmental perspective? Again, Planning Commission, you will be holding the first round of public hearings. You will make a recommendation one way or the other to the city council. You may, might ask us for modifications. And then city council holds their own round of public hearings. And then hopefully at the very end, we have an ordinance and have adopted a comp plan update by December 31st, 2024. And I think that is the last slide. So again, this is probably going to be the first in a series of presentations. It's a lot of information. If there's things that you want to do a deeper dive on, I guess, is buildable lands, the population targets. Where are we today? What's the makeup of our community? Just let us know and we'll bring that information back to you. Questions, comments?
You know, that's, Monroe pretty well. You know Monroe pretty well. Growth of 1.5% annually, does that seem reasonable?
Oh, I can only tell you from my last time here, we were growing at about 1% annually. So one, one, one and a half seems reasonable. Before I got here, again, so I worked for the city from 2000 to 2008. And I arrived at the tail end of the last growth spurt. So it's, it's, you have these spikes and valleys. But if you look at it, just a straight line, a 1% is reasonable for the city.
Thank you.
Yep.
Talking about the, is that like, so that's them coming into the city, correct? And, or like being part of the city.
For annexation.
Yeah. And so do those numbers count as like, oh, this many units or this many?
You said my question so much better.
Yeah. So if you could go back, um, let's see here.
I needed that, that foundation.
Yeah.
Like, I didn't even think about the growth that way.
Yeah, so we actually do have, we're, we're responsible for the city, but it's the city and the urban growth area. So this slide is a really good one. It shows you what's in the city, the unincorporated portions of our urban growth area and what our total number is supposed to be.
Okay, so those, that was already included.
Yeah.
And, and like, if they, are, are there plans on annexing them? Or that's not, we need on top of it?
Well, we have, we have two active annexations and they are already pre-zoned based on what our comprehensive plan said. And so as we're thinking about our total capacity for population and employment, that should be one of the questions we're asking. The most, most of the areas in our, in our urban growth area is residential R4, one dwelling unit per four acres. Is that appropriate still? The piece, the North 41, that has the same zoning as the Woodlands, which is R7 or one dwelling unit per, or seven dwelling units per acre, sorry. So these, these are the questions we should be asking. You, you have a finite amount of land and once it gets developed, it's going to be a long time before it gets redeveloped. There has to be enough, the value of land, the value of property. Actually, Jeremy Volk could probably have a conversation on this. But when, when is it appropriate? When's that tipping point to say it's time for redevelopment? And the way our city is built out, kind of like you've got one shot to get it right.
Yeah. So we're actually responsible for some UGA growth as well, is that right?
No.
UGA, I'm sorry, by population.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I meant, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. We, we, we are highly discouraged from increasing our urban growth boundaries. So I want to be pretty clear on that.
Right. But that's funny that we have some responsibility to grow employment. I mean, obviously, it's miniscule, but you have some responsibility to grow population there. And wow, I didn't know that we had domain or authority over.
Well, so again, you're thinking, big picture. Here's this boundary that we don't want to go beyond. And so you want to think about how you're growing the city first, but you also want to plan out. These are the areas we want to grow into. How should they look? So all we have today is we have a zoning for them, or pre-zoning.
Right. So employment gains would come from commercial, commercial zoned areas, industrial zoned areas. Possibly mixed use.
Yeah. Medical counts, school district counts. Yeah. All right, well, that's all I have for you this evening.
Yeah, on the optional items, um, you said that if we get the funding for that, is that always mutually exclusive from like, planning up? Like, it's just a separate thing where we have to find different funding for climate change?
Yeah.
In order to do it?
Yes and no. So the way, the ones that are asterisked are the ones that the state said, you shall have this element. But unless we give you money to establish your element, to do the research, to come up with the policies, it's, it's optional for you to do it on your own. That's all it means. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't be doing it. It just, the state has said, because we didn't fund it, you're doing it on your own.
Just a warning, Kate, this came up a lot last time.
Yeah.
Because of the airport restrictions. And we have newer commissioners, some newer commissioners, there's going to be a lot of discussion related to, why can't we, you know, zone this this way or develop this or whatever? Because it has such a large impact, it's such a.
Are you able to get on the internet? Can you go to our zoning map? That's a really.
It's particularly perplexing, because like last month, I was down in San Diego, sitting in Little Italy, and I see these giant jets flying about 500 feet over where we are. And I'm thinking, well, why can they do that there? But we, we have no-fly zones over half our city.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's actually, airport compatibility is really interesting. I actually wrote the first set of regulations back in, was that 2000, 2004 or '05? And that was one of the, that was one of the things that we had to do to be compliant with, they used to call it regulatory reform. It was one of the states, states laws that passed with the Growth Management Act that says your, your regulations must be consistent with the Growth Management Act. Now, by the way, every time we change our legislation, you need to be compliant. So the airport, the airport overlay is shown by little airplanes. The interesting piece on this is Dr. Havich passed away, I believe, last year, earlier this year, or last year. And so the airport's been up for sale. If the person, if the property sells to somebody else who wants to keep it as an airport, we have to follow these regulations. The zones are all based on safety and crash data. So your biggest restrictions are at the ends of the runway. The fairgrounds is on the east and then kind of headed west out of the city and the Freylands are impacted. What that means is you have restrictions on height. You have restrictions on density of people, and that's indoors, outdoors. Warehouses are typically a use that you see around airports for this very reason. They are typically not high employee, but large buildings, so it lowers the, the risk. If the airport no longer exists, the airport overlay goes away. It will be something that we need to think about. But you are correct, it, it has a significant impact on the, was that the entire northwest portion of the community?
Melanie, you have a question, comment?
Do we know if there's any pending purchase of the airport or not? I've, I've seen or heard some rumblings, but I didn't know if there's any accuracy to that or not.
The only one that I have received recently were inquiries from the Snohomish County PUD. It was under contract.
Okay, that's what I probably heard about, if somebody was talking about it becoming a power facility of some kind. So I didn't know if that was, if that was accurate or if that was in the process or if it was just the very beginnings of discussion.
Yeah, the, the challenges are the zoning. I mean, it's, it's, it's tourist commercial is the zone, so there are very specific land use options there. And a lot of the uses on the airport property today become legal non-conforming once the airport goes away. So it's going to be interesting to see what happens.
And I do know one interested party recently sold there, where they were interested in purchasing it. They recently sold the land that they're on now. So I don't know where they're going, but it's not, it's not to the airport.
Oh, okay, yeah, there was, I believe there was a, was that when you opened a bunch of offers? A couple of months ago, we had a lot of inquiries on very different things. Everything from maintaining the airport to something more consistent with the tourist commercial zone. I hadn't heard from the PUD until, was that three or four weeks ago? And they were asking questions, so until it sells, we need to assume it's going to be an airport.
It's funny to think that the city has to be involved a lot in the discussions about that real estate sale. Like, I'm sure you guys have been getting a ton of inquiries about, if I buy it, can I do this or that?
Zoning, yeah. And the other piece is that there are a lot of critical areas up there, a lot of wetlands, streamhead. So it's, it's a challenge, it's a beautiful piece of property, but it's also challenging.
Can I make a request to get a copy of the current comp plan printed out? I know it's like 150 pages, but I would like it.
Do you want all the appendices as well or just the plan itself?
The appendices has what, maps and stuff or?
Nope, it's got the water sewer plan, it's got the transportation plan, it's got the parks, recreation, open space plan. They're all separate appendices?
Maybe not that at first, and then if I, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I was just wondering, how, what's, how high can you build in that airport zone? Is it the three with the commercial on the bottom or do you know?
Oh my gosh, wait, I have access to the internet.
Just like, that's like where that goes.
I want to say it's 35 feet maximum, but.
I think that's what you said the last time, but I didn't know if it was less. Because that's, that's the max that we can do in the city altogether, right?
45 is the maximum anywhere in the city today. But the airport. Just one second. So if you're ever interested and you want to go searching on our website, just go to the municipal code. Title 22 is all of our land use, that's the majority of the land use standards.
Okay.
Sure, I can, I can email you too.
Just not much is enough for me to answer that.
Gotcha, okay.
Thank you.
It's like, that's it? Yes. Okay. Are there any other commissioners that would like a hard copy of the comp plan? Just in case. No? Okay.
Oh, Melanie, you go, you want one?
Yeah, two.
Yes, please, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Kate. Okay. Should we go move on to discussion by commissioners instead? Yeah. I'll start with Melanie.
Hello, everybody. I was not here for our last meeting because some of my local commitments overlapped. And so I needed to be at the school board meeting on that day. However, one of the things that I wasn't there for, but that they discussed was their capital facilities plan. And I know that the, I know that the commissioners discussed potential exemption for multifamily units at the last meeting. And this kind of ties into that. And of course, the entire meeting, my baby is fine and he's going to start crying now. So let's see if I can get through this before he gets too loud. I apologize. It's the talking, I probably woke him up. But they, they approved their capital facilities plan, which kind of looks forward to the next few years as well. Please come back to me, I apologize. This happens, this is the second time this has happened at recent meetings. It's that I turn my mic on and then a kid is noisy, so please come back. I do have a report.
Okay, thank you. And Kate, somebody from the school board will present their capital facilities plan.
Yeah, typically, the city adopts it by reference. And that's because they would like us to collect school impact fees on their behalf. In order to do that, they need to make it part of our comprehensive plan. And so it'll be, it'd be nice to hear from them, although I understand there's been some changes there. And we're new to, Lance and I are both new, so we'll just need to coordinate with them.
Sounds good.
And you will hold a public hearing to say, yes, it looks good. And that's how it's part of the process.
Okay. Liz?
Economic development, we're only meeting once a month right now, but we met with the group that is potentially doing our city survey, hopefully, possibly this year for our city business surveys. Highly encouraging after some feedback we got from our EDAB joint city council meeting. So they have the ability to really tailor services down to be able to meet a lot of the concerns that city council members had. And frankly, also those of us with EDAB that are getting a stronger response. And then also all the work that James Palmer also does with the city survey. So hopefully, the combination of the two will really help get us a stronger response on the city survey. So that was pretty exciting. And then there was some talk about the city branding and lodging studies and more about the comprehensive plan, which we're all hearing about the time. And then the constant updates with Lowe's and then our Kelsey property, which just keep crossing our fingers that Lowe's and that CCNR is moving forward so that it makes us that land more sellable and something can be developed there with a plan that we've already put in place to make it develop nice and pretty. Because I know all of us want to see something there. And I think that's all I got. I really wish they were not setting off fireworks in this lovely timber box we're all sitting in right now. Yay residents, thank you. I'm sure all of you guys heard those too, but thanks a lot. That's all I got.
Okay. Hopefully, they're not Broncos fans. You ready, Melanie?
Yeah, I should be. I think the bottle will calm him down. So, um, and I wasn't going to give a big report of the capital facilities plan just because I know that we will hear that report. But one of the things that I found interesting that kind of ties back to some of the discussion we had is that those impact fees for the district have, in, in the past, Monroe's kind of been in a, like a outlier compared to other districts in the, in the county. And that Monroe has benefited from impact fees from more growth in terms of multifamily units. And for this one that they just adopted, they're anticipating a huge decline in that, like a massive decline. Probably, I think it's, it was like 65% loss, I think, or decline in what was coming before. So it just kind of ties into some of that discussion with us in looking forward to see if we're wanting to consider that, that tax exemption to kind of incentivize more families to, to come in and, or more development or more developers to come in and create multifamily units and for those families to move in because they're seeing just a huge, huge decline in students who are living in those new, those newly constructed units. So it, it just is another reminder of the fact that our work and all the work in this community, it all kind of ties together with the district, with the city, with the county, and then even with the comprehensive stuff, kind of moving up to the state. It all, it all impacts one another and it's, it's all stuff that we have to keep in mind. So it's kind of interesting, I'm, I'm enjoying and then just learning a lot, listening into some of this information that we've been getting, as well as some of the information for, from like the school board meetings and stuff like that. When I'm able to tune into those or watch or listen to them after the fact. So, um, yeah, that's kind of my report.
And Kate, on, on that note, can you clarify what we were talking about for kind of multifamily tax abatement? I was under the impression that it's property tax exemption periods rather than school impact fees is, is waving school impact fees. It would be a property tax exemption for a period of time if it was, you know, a certain type of property that we were interested in.
That's correct. So it's, it's specific to multi, it's to encourage multifamily development. And I wish Liam were here, but he's already in Europe. It was the, was it 10, 20, and 30-year timeframes? And to get each tax exemption, you needed to provide X number of units or you had to have the forever affordable housing designation at the income level. It's, it's property tax that does not have anything to do with impact fees. That's a completely separate item.
That was my understanding.
Yeah.
Okay. Jake?
Ah, gosh, can't even remember when the last time we met was, so I'm trying to think of it.
And it's from August 8th.
Okay, gotcha. I think between now and then, and man, this feels like forever ago. I went to one of the movies in the park at Lake Ty and it was so cool. The, the turnout is always so amazing at those. I went to one of the movies in the park at Lake Ty and it was so cool. The, the turnout is always so amazing at those things and yeah, it just gives you a warm fuzzy feeling about the city. So I had a great time there with my in-laws, my wife. I wanted to express appreciation to Public Works for a lot of the grinding they've been doing on uh walkways. Uh, Lake Ty is, is what made me uh recognize it and then all the way up towards uh the seventy-six by Lord Hill. Uh, but they've been doing a lot of um root grinding and leveling out of the, the asphalt and the concrete, which I, I know is making or is going to be a um really welcome thing uh for people who, I don't know, ride bikes or um uh, or in wheelchairs, just I, I think it is a, a really good service that they did. So appreciate them. And of course I had a, something on my mind about a week ago that I really wanted to bring up and it's escaping me. So yeah. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, I guess since then we've had the parade, the fair. The city staff did an amazing job getting ready for the parade. I mean, I live right on Main Street, so I'm able to see all the prep work that they did and the, they've got down to such a science. I mean, they have the signs and the road closed stuff set up the night before or even days before. So it's quick. Um, the, the portable toilet stuff, all the extra stuff that they go ahead and do, um, made it a good success. Let's see, there was a bit of a cluster at the end of the parade this year. They, the way that they um reopened the street a little early. Um, there was still taken down the stage and there was a lot of upset drivers um right at Lake Maine and Blakely. So the police were, uh, did step in and helping with that. Uh, also our police department helping with the fair traffic. Uh, I know that they get compensated for that, but they, they do um really make it a lot easier to get in and out of the fair traffic. Um, what else have we had going on? I mean, that brings so, that brought so many people, both of those things brought so many people to downtown and just to, to town. And so they are an important part of our identity. Um. Yeah, I can't really think of anything else being going on, but um, I, I didn't go to Parks Board. It was on my birthday, so I skipped. And so I don't say a thing to report. Um, I think that's all.
That's right. Not the ideal thing to do on your birthday.
I made a thought. I was really like, should I do this?
Happy late in birthday.
I'm just gonna go not do that.
Thanks, Melanie. Kelsey?
Saturday and my roommate went and she said it was amazing. I think four hundred people were there, even with all the smoke. And um she said it was awesome. Um, they did ask a lot of people that were there and like where they were from and it wasn't a lot of people from Monroe. So that was interesting. Um, I, just an interesting fact on like, how do we get people from here to experience those kind of things and kind of get? Um, I don't know the word out for that or get people interested in it, because um there's a lot of people from just different, different towns, which was cool to bring them here and have that event. So the music was awesome and just, it was just really fun. So.
That's good.
Yeah.
I'm sure it'll just grow since this is just the first year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll get it on.
Focus in the town.
For sure. Yeah. So that's all I have to add.
It's really great. Okay. And I just had a question. I don't know for the planners, the Eastside Masonry spot, they're doing a lot of work, you know, pipe, you know, putting down some pipe. Looks like maybe drainage pipe. Um, what else is happening?
Should be, can you pop online again? We actually have a picture of it. It's a gateway.
No.
No, it's a Lakeview.
You said it for.
It's a Lakeview building. It's um kind of a warehouse.
Oh, is it the wet noses? Did they end up going through with their?
I don't know about that. Um, I do know the building permit, um, they're, they've gotten all their building permits, so.
Awesome.
They're going, it's under construction.
Fantastic. Okay.
I thought we did. If you go to the projects page for some reason, or maybe. We can send you pictures though if you want.
Okay. That'd be great. Since I walked by there just, you know, checking the progress, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's one of the pages. Oh, okay. All right. We'll send you um the building elevation and site plan.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Bull? That was it. I just had a question.
Yeah, you get off the hook easy.
I really enjoyed the parade though. It's been a few years since I've been and it was really well attended and, you know, there was booths and plenty of people and.
Was that the first year since Copman? Do I remember that correctly?
Yeah.
That, yeah, they didn't, it didn't miss a beat, the, the amount of people in it. That's, that was going to be my comment when uh, I went earlier. It was cool.
Especially good for families. All the kids come out for the candy and.
Lot of kids.
Great to see everybody.
One comment I know people were saying is like it had gotten real businessy because obviously it's by the chamber, but um this year there was a lot of um people, like groups doing dance and the, it felt more like that again instead of, um, yeah.
It's awesome. I have such memories of a child going to those in the shopping cart parade, burglar, burglar brigade, is that right? And the briefcases, I always crack them.
Love the dancing horse.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
I saw my Taco Bell that day for some reason. I don't know why. I was leaving the parade and there were my Taco Bell on the sidewalk, like horrible. Yeah.
Okay, Kate, what do you have for us?
Uh.
Do we have a question from Melanie?
No, I was just going to add that I can speak from um a mom's standpoint that there was also plenty of candy to be had for all the children. So I think the kids of Monroe who attended were probably happy on that front alone. And that was, you know, aside from all the awesome entertainment and the dancing horses and everybody else. So.
Yeah, we, we did talk to Dr. Max and he's retired, so he doesn't have to work on your kids' teeth and fix them from the candy. So.
Uh, from our end, um, we have a new code for code enforcement officer, Kevin, and I'm, I'm sorry, I did not remember his last name. He started on the first of September. Um, other than that, I don't think if we've got any, we'll have the highlight, the project highlights at your next meeting. Um, other than that, keep on going.
Yeah. Is Kevin from a nearby city?
Oh, my goodness. I should know this.
Oh, I put you on this. I'm sorry.
I, I don't believe so. Huh? Oh, that's right. He came from Island County, Island County. That's right.
Okay.
Do you remember his last name? We'll get his, we'll get his information. He's really nice. He fits in really well with the team.
Yeah. What do you have for us, Hannah?
So I actually do have something this time. Um, little project I've been working on for a bit um is a commissioner handbook, basically. Um, I emailed Kelsey a copy of it today. Uh, it's got a little table of contents, just kind of gives you a brief overview of what the planning commission is, who you're going to be seeing at meetings, Imagine Monroe, the basics of planning. There's just a couple of things that I want to kind of fine tune and make sure is clear across the board. But um what I'm really excited about is all the footnotes. There's lots of really good resources. So even if you are a seasoned planning commissioner, I'm still going to send it to you because um there's, you know, it's got our annual work program. It's got lots of different webinars that you can go and watch if you feel up to it. But um, yeah, so that's all I've got. Uh, probably send that to you, I don't know, sometime this week.
Way to go.
Yeah, well, yay.
Awesome.
Also that short course on planning uh that you sent the link for, September twenty-ninth. I don't know when our next meeting is, but uh it was really easy to sign up for. It's been for us. If anybody else is going to sign up for it.
It should be the twenty-sixth will be our next.
Okay.
So you're Thursday, right between the, the survey? Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Commissioners in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you all for attending. Appreciate it.
Thank you and go Hawks.
I am disappointed the Seahawks beat the Broncos by one point, one point.
Are we still recording? I mean, we're still recording, but Jake, can you go back and watch it?
What'd you say?
Are you going to go back and watch it?
So I watched the first.